Okay, call the meeting to order. We got a large crowd here tonight. Must be a special event going on tonight. Is there any policeman out on the street right now?
Yeah.
All right. Okay. At this time, we please stand for the invocation with the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's pray. Father, we come before you this evening grateful for the opportunities we have in front of us for our wonderful city. And Lord, we just want to thank you for our new police chief Mitchell and pray for your hand in his actions with our team and our residents. We also pray for your continued grace as we continue to move forward in faith, in Jesus' name. Amen.
(Inaudible) (Inaudible)
Okay, at this time, there's a pretty special event here, and I'm going to turn this over to the city manager as he wants to make a special introduction and also swearing in. Mr. Campbell.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor. This is a very special night, and it's something we've been looking forward to quite some time. And just a little bit of context, I think everybody knows that we have a new police chief, and he is here tonight to be sworn in. He's got members of his family here that I'll introduce in just a second. But just for some context, we did have a very comprehensive process to make this selection, and I personally want to thank everybody that was involved in that. A lot of the staff helped with that decision and that entire process of narrowing down applications, going through that process and making this what ended up being a several very qualified candidates that we had to narrow this down from. And so Wendell Mitchell was on the top of that list, I think, from the beginning when I first got his application. It kind of jumped off the page at me, and so I was very excited to see him go through that process and the way he resonated with everyone through the process, the community. I want to thank the community who came to that meet and greet a couple of months ago. That was an incredible turnout, spoke volumes about how much you care about this community. And I also want to give a shout out to the Texas Police Chiefs Association and Gary Johnson, who's standing in the back of the room. Wave at the people, Gary. There he is. Gary was an instrumental part of this process as our consultant, and I can't thank you enough for the work you put into this. And so a little bit of background, I think most of the people in here have met Chief Mitchell already, but if not, we stole him from the town of Flower Mound, and that's something we'll brag about for some time now. He started there in, I think, the mid-'90s as a police officer and worked his way up in that organization to the position of Assistant Chief of Police, which he has served in that position, I think, since 2011. Too many accolades, too many accomplishments to go over at this point, but we are thrilled to have Wendell Mitchell here as our chief. We're very, very excited. I know the community is excited. I think you can tell from the people here tonight, the department is very excited about this, too. So with that, I think our city secretary, Lana Wiley, is going to swear this gentleman in as our new police chief. And oh, and before we do that, let me, I want to say, he's got some folks here tonight. Let me find his text. Wendell is here tonight with his wife, Michelle, his son, Austin, his sister-in-law and brother-in-law, Rob and Christina Agnew, and their son, Nathan. So thank you guys for being here to celebrate this with us as well. We appreciate it.
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Microphone is yours, if you want, to say a few words of introduction.
All right. How do you do? Somebody in the microphone?
We can hear you.
Okay, very good. Can everybody hear me? First of all, yes, my name is Wendell Mitchell, and yes, I am from the town of Flower Mound, Texas. And I will say Flower Mound was an awesome department, and for me to leave here, I had to find an incredible department to land at. Why am I here in the city of Corinth? I am honored and blessed to be here. And the reason for that is because of the officers you see standing here in the back of the room, because I have the opportunity to serve them and to serve this great community, and I thank you. (Applause)
The council, please, come down and get the picture taken with him for the...
And I think one of your family members is going to pin this badge on him.
(Inaudible)
You got it. Mayor, why don't we let him do that first, and then y'all can get a pic? You don't want a picture without his badge on, so that's good.
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Okay, citizens' comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Comments about any of the council agenda items are appreciated by the council and may be taken into consideration at this time or during that agenda item. Council is prohibited from acting on or discussing items brought before them at this time. Is there anybody other than... Who's going to be speaking on this?
No, no, they want to speak at when we get to those items.
Okay. Okay.
You guys want to speak on the floor?
Okay. Very good. Okay, at this time, I'd entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Do you have further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous.
No. Are you going to go after it? (Inaudible)
Consider an act on an ordinance of the city of Corinth, Texas, amending Chapter 39 Code of Ethics of the Code of Ordinances and direct the city manager to work with city attorney to retain outside legal counsel and for the city manager to contact individuals serving on boards and commissions who are identified in the ordinance to serve on the ethics commission. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is an item we've discussed the last couple of meetings. We discussed it in a workshop probably now a month and a half ago. I don't know the exact date, but, and then we brought it to you at one of our previous meetings recently, and we did not have a quorum that could actually consider or certainly act on that item at that evening. And so the information that is in your packet is the same information that was included when this was on the agenda last time, and we've been making some revisions to that as recently as today, very recently, on some input that we've received from some folks. And I think tonight, council member Garber is going to cover some of those items, and we'll answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, sir. If everybody would give me just two more minutes. This is hot off the press, and I want to make sure it reads how I intended, so just two more quick seconds. The challenge we're going to have is getting this into the hands of everybody before they make a comment, but I think after I explain it... Is it okay?
Okay.
Well, let's hand them out after I explain it, and then we'll do that. So just a slight bit of history. I mentioned my concerns with the inability to fill both the Ethics Committee and the Board of Adjustments about three years ago. At that time, if I remember correctly, we had an issue. Thank you, Greg.
It's okay to close it.
Yeah.
As long as it's not locked.
You can close it. You can close them.
You guys can close it.
Yeah, it's pretty loud. Okay, so we had, on and off over the years, had issues filling that board. Thank God, we'd always had the ability to finally fill it, and usually, we would go out in the community, find people, and sometimes it would take a month or two. Don, you probably remember back in the day when economic development and P&amp;Z, we had those issues with, and we were scrambling. Well, then we had some years of things not being issued, then city manager Hart passed, and it popped up again, I want to say about a year ago. And so we had a conversation, or I had a conversation, if I remember correctly, with city manager Campbell, and, but that time, at that year, we had plenty of applications come in, and the ethics board was filled, and not a problem. This last year, we only have two people on the board, and one person put an application in, and my understanding is, has since withdrawn it. And of course, in 20 years of history, from what I understand in the city of Corinth, in this one, two-month span is when we end up with an ethics complaint. And so, of course, we need to fix that, and we can't do things outside of the ordinance, which are the laws that we're governed by. And so we have to change the ordinance. And so we had put out some ideas to get those ordinances fixed, and the idea was that we would pull from, from the current acting boards that are staffed and active, EDC being one of them, P&amp;Z being an alternate, and received an email, received a comment from Scott, and received a message on Facebook saying, hey, what is going on with this thing? And for the life of me, I could not figure out what the problem was until I had a discussion today, and I finally understand what the problem is. The problem, and where I think some people were having some issues, is the board that we work closest with, if there was ever a board that city council works closest with, it's probably economic development. We handle their 380 agreements, we're sending things back and forth. Probably not a good board to pull for ethics-type complaints, right? The second is the allegation of friendships and some other things. As somebody that, I don't personally know that I'm aware of anybody on any of these boards, it's hard for me in this seat to be able to tell who's friends and not, but that doesn't mean that we can't have an ordinance that doesn't address some of those things. The big change that I'm going to propose this evening, and I would love some public comment on, the ethics board is a judicial board, which means that they are not a recommending board to the city council. The P&amp;Z is a recommending board, the EDC is a recommending board. The ethics board is a judicial board, meaning if a complaint's brought to them, their decision as far as the city's concerned is final. If you, if somebody were to have an issue with that decision, whether it's the complainant or the person that's being, that has the ethics complaint levied against them, the next step, I believe, would be the state. And I could be wrong, but as best as I can understand, you probably could appeal or file a different complaint. The other board that we have in the city of Corinth is a Board of Adjustments and Appeals, or the Construction Board of Adjustment and Appeals. I believe we formally call it the BOA, Board of Appeals?
Board of Adjustments.
Board of Adjustments. Yes. And that board is also a judicial board, meaning that they only meet if a developer, for instance, would have an issue with a decision that the P&amp;Z's made or city council, then they could appeal to this board, and their decision is essentially final, so they don't report to the city council. And so the main change to this is, and what I would like to present to this group and to you, is that we first draw, in the event that we don't have enough applications for the ethics board, like we do now, that we would draw from the Board of Appeals, because they, they're, they do the same thing, right? We don't work with them, their decision's final, they don't report to the city council, for instance. The next step, if for some reason all else fails, and there's conflicts or there's an issue, I believe P&amp;Z would be a good tertiary emergency backup, and I don't anticipate ever having to use P&amp;Z, but out of any of the main, the boards that meet often, P&amp;Z does not interact with council ever on a regular basis. So we get, what they think, if a development meets or does not meet a certain ordinance, we get, and we either approve or deny that thing. But I want to be clear, we originally did not include that into this ethics thing, right? But anytime we go to edit an ethics ordinance, it's cause for concern. And so I want to try to think of, for the next 10 years, would there ever be a chance between conflicts or not being able to fill a board that we would have to go to a, to P&amp;Z or outside of those two? Then I want to make sure that it was written in here, so it was all out in the open. The other change that I made is, we had previously suggested that we would have a special council come in and make a decision on their own on whether or not an ethics complaint is viable. And so I made the suggestion, and I think it's in here, I did read it, yeah, that the ethics board that we would compile, right, if not the ethics board as a whole, because we were able to fill the seats, would be part of the process with the special council, not our city attorney, to, as a group, decide if this is good to move forward or not. The other piece is, because, you know, it's been 20 years, allegedly, since we've had one of these things pop through, and a lot can change, meaning that we can put somebody on an ethics board that at the time that we interview them, everybody agrees, we don't know them, we are not friends with them, we don't have any relationships with them, but two years later, that kind of stuff can change, and, you know, you can kind of forget, especially if we get five or six years down the road. And so I wanted to include in here that at the time of an ethics complaint, that the members that end up on that board must sign an affidavit stating that there are no conflicts as outlined in section C, which I was going to read out real quick. Ineligibility would occur if, of course, if we're members of city council, where there has been a separation from the city service as a city official within one year of appointment by the person or person's relative, relatives within the first or second degree of affinity or the first or second degree of blood or adoption with the current city official or an involved party, current service as an elected official in Denton County, conviction of a felony or a crime of moral turpitude, or a person who, based upon personal knowledge of the alleged facts, or based upon a personal relationship with an involved party, declares that he or she will not be able to be impartial. And so where we're at now tonight, I think that that probably covers anything that could possibly pop up as far as excluding oneself from being impartial. So if you're friends, if, you know, if you're acquaintances, or whatever the case may be, if you're in business with them, of course, you would have to sign an affidavit stating, yep, none of these things are true about me, and we can move forward with either party, right? And are we good? Did I cover everything, Scott, that we had talked about today? Okay, now, for the other two sitting up here, this is the first that they've heard about it as well, and so I'd like to get this at least passed out as best we can. That way, we have some educated responses or some informed responses, and if we need to, we can go into executive, polish something up, and handle any other questions or complaints. Good?
Is there any way while they're reading that, we could go into executive? I just have a few questions. Or no?
We can go into executive if this consultation...
We're presented for general consultation, so the mayor, we just need to announce it under item number four.
What's that?
I just wanted to ask a couple of questions before we were...
From city attorney? Yeah, if you, if any of you have questions of city attorney, you can certainly break into a closed session to get those, most definitely.
Okay.
So, Mayor, under item, on the, under item M on the agenda, there's a double asterisk, and it says, "City Council Reserves Rights to Re-Set to Closed Session, and Anytime Your Force Is Being Discussed," any matter presented on the agenda is authorized by the Ouija Act Constitution of Attorney, so you'll just need to announce item 1071 and item number I-4.
I-4, okay. So we're going into executive session at seven o'clock.
Okay, we're out of executive session at eight oh one and Mr. Garber's got a few issues that he's going to relate to you in terms of changes on this your document.
Yes, so number one, I apologize, this probably feels a little messy, but I think everybody here tonight is getting a preview of what, you know, when we're dealing with ordinances, the way that this can go. So, we went back into our executive session and it was brought to my attention that there was one thing that will need to change. The change is going to be in section, I'm sorry, I've got it written right up here at the top, section thirty nine point one four and one five. I had made the suggestion that the board should be involved in the affirmation process, which is a prima facie legal process. The legal advice back is that that specific process needs to be solely in the hands of a licensed attorney. So, we're going to strike those changes, that's what I'm going to present tonight to council. And so what this means is that if a complaint comes in, it's going to go to special counsel, separate of the city, it's somebody the city will have to pay. But this person will specialize in this process, they will get our ordinance, they will get the complaint, and they will decide on the surface, is there evidence enough that we need to move forward with the ethics committee? If the answer to that is yes, then that means the ethics committee will convene after everything else in this process is affirmative. And anything that's discussed with the attorney, much like our executive session, will happen in that room. Anything else that is discussed will happen at the dais and be open exactly like our council meetings. So, I want to make sure that you're aware of that change because I'm going to do it as part of my motion. So, when and if you decide to speak on the issue, I want you to be educated on that piece, okay?
Can I add something?
Yes, ma'am, please.
So, just to make sure it's very clear that the outside legal counsel is not looking at evidence. A prima facie review is when you basically look at someone's statement and you look at what the violations could be and you say, if all of this were absolutely true, would there be a violation? So, they're not looking at whether they think it happened or didn't happen, they're just saying, are the elements of what would be a violation listed? And if that's the case, then it moves forward and the board hears all the facts and they're the fact finder. So, it's just to be clear that it's nothing evidentiary that outside legal counsel would be doing. They're just looking to see, does it meet the elements, if it does, it moves, if it doesn't, then it's finished. Because there's not a violation of the ordinance, if it doesn't meet those elements, there couldn't be one. But if there could be one, then we go on and the person who is complaining has to prove that up.
Mayor?
Okay, any other comments from council? If not, I'll entertain some speaking on this issue, is it Lyndon Foster? You don't want to speak, okay, you want to go on the record though? Okay, Don Glockel, please state your name and your address for the records, please.
Don Glockel, twenty one oh one Lake Sharon Drive.
And you have three minutes, sir.
All right, a lot of what I was going to present is, has been fixed, thank you, Mr. Garber, appreciate that. I strongly felt like that that was going to be a conflict with our staffs, our committees, but there's a lot of cleanup things that still need to be done. And the first thing I want to address was going to be the last, but being you just talked about it, I want to first off commend the city attorney for stepping down and having outside committee, outside legal advice, so that we don't have a conflict of interest. But yet, we were going to put all of our committees in a conflict of interest, in my opinion, thank you. So, if you want, so if you take a look at the procedure going through on a complaint, it comes to the city secretary. City secretary, if it's correct or not correct, sends it back, gets the correction, gets it back, there's so many days in between all that. Goes to the city attorney, according to the, I've got three different drafts, so who knows? goes to the city attorney in conjunction with the city manager, and then it gets handed off to the outside counsel for the final disposition of whether it has merit or standing, whatever the term might be. And I don't disagree with any of that, some, but you've got to clean up a little bit of that, where it really, how it really routes. Does it go to you? Does it go through the city manager? Does it just go to you, to the outside attorney? With all that said, if you go to the last page of this form, now, if the outcome of the hearings from the, the board, they, they make a ruling, whatever the ruling is, and either side disagrees with that ruling, they can come back and present evidence to the chairman of the ethics committee, through the secretary. Send it to you, you agree that the filing is right, you don't have to look at the evidence, but you agree that all the i's are dotted and t's crossed. You then send it to the, not to the attorneys, but now you send it to the ethics chairman. The ethics chairman at their sole discretion, according to your, can decide whether that evidence has merit. And hear, rehear the case and the ev, and, and change this outcome, and there's no legal advice whatsoever involved in that reconsideration, which is the last paragraph of your manual. I think that's a serious mistake. I had so many notes that I've crossed out and highlighted, I don't know what else I want to say. But I, I think, I appreciate you guys really working hard on this. I think the, the fact that now that you've changed and eliminated all these boards and so on, but I also want to say that if you look at the list of boards that you had in, maybe it's immature on that, the list of boards you had, on one page, don't list the, don't match the description of the boards in the next page. Like Park Board wasn't even on the list of commission's boards and councils, they listed everybody on one page, and then you go over on another page and say, out of this list, we pulled five, they pulled one that doesn't even exist.
Okay. Thank you.
We're taking notes. Not allowed to have a back and forth, as you know. I'm going to ask questions with the attorney here at the dais once we hear everybody's comments. Thank you.
Michael, is it Hertiford?
He's on item five.
Okay. Okay, you're on item five. Okay, thank you.
You do have a few that would like to be, you might check to see if they want to be read into the record, that didn't want to speak.
Okay. All right. Ms. Glockel, you want to be on the record? Lynn Hollihan, do you want to be on the record? No, you don't want to speak, but do you want us to record it? Okay. Mary Ellen Green, do you want, be just in the record? Okay. And, okay, all right, Mr. Garber.
Yes, sir. Question, city attorney, so the reconsideration that we just heard, can you, please fill me in on that?
It's for new evidence? So, what it says down in the last paragraph, down there, looking at my laptop, in the last paragraph, it says that the complainant or the accused, it's just an appeal process, may request the board of, the board of ethics, not just the chairperson, to reconsider. But what it ties it to is it, it says the request has to be filed with the city secretary, and then after, after the final opinion's done, then the request for reconsideration is sent to the chairperson, the city secretary, and the non-filing party, the complainer, whoever did not file it. If that chairperson finds in their sole discretion that there's new evidence, that the request for reconsideration includes new evidence that wasn't submitted at a prior hearing, and that the new evidence bears directly on the board of ethics' previous decision, then the chairperson schedules another hearing and you go through the whole process with the board again. So, it's, it's an appeal. And I will tell you that part of this is we tried, because we had a pending complaint, we were just really trying to clean up the issue with the board and how that worked, and trying not to really touch anything else that was in here. We had been talking about that, as y'all know, before that, there were a number of things, this is one of them, that needed to kind of get cleaned up. But because we had a pending appeal, we tried to just change what we had to. Doesn't mean there's not more work that needs to be done, because there is.
So, this reconsideration and some of the other things that were brought up are exactly the same as when they were approved last time?
Yes.
Okay. So, okay. So, so, let me think about that for a second. So, the chances of us having new evidence and then, then having to go through and fix this, when this was already the playing field at the time that a complaint is filed, not meaning that we can't change it in the future, but trying to change as little as we possibly can to be as fair and expeditious as possible, in that interest at this moment, it makes sense to go with this, bring it back, and then we can spend some time kind of thinking our way through. So, a question is, when during the, the ethics board process, the, the outside attorney, are they involved for executive session items with that board?
Outside counsel would be involved actively throughout the process, because this is a hearing process.
Right.
As a, as its quasi judicial entity. So, they are going to have to be, because they, one of the first things they have to do is come up with rules of procedure, because we've never met, they don't, they have not done that.
Right.
So, in order to conduct an actual hearing with a quasi judicial body, just like a board of adjustment, and that's one of the reasons why, you know, it kind of fits nicely in, because they already have to follow that process.
Right.
When they have a variance hearing, it's a hearing.
I understand.
With testimony.
But my point is, that ethics committee cannot meet without an attorney present in case something pops up. And if that were the case, it would have to be that same outside counsel. So, any reconsideration would have to be had with the original attorney that was part of the process from the beginning.
Yes. We're hoping to try to retain, and Scott and I have been doing some research and talked to some folks, trying to find somebody that knows municipal law and works with ethics, so that they can give some advice, or at least have some analogous experience, if not just a straight ethics ordinance, where they've had to review policy and apply facts to it. And we're trying to get that person who can then start and get this set up, do that initial determination, help them through the hearing process with, with witnesses and swearing in and all those types of things that come with it, and then all the way through the final process.
Of course. So, what that means is the, the worry is, is that the board is going to have to worry about handling evidence without the expertise of an attorney. But the answer to that is, at no time will they have to do that. The, the attorney that's been involved from the beginning's going to be there. So, there would be no need to, to do any of those changes tonight. We're, we're good to go.
Yes.
Okay.
We'll be a lawyer involved through the whole process, because it's a hearing process.
Right.
I, what I heard is not that an attorney won't be present, but it says, if the chairperson finds in their sole discretion, I think that's the problem, if, that there's new evidence. I think that if, that it should not be the chairperson's sole discretion. And if we're cleaning this up, we might as well clean this one up too and put it in here, because I think that's, I could be wrong, but that's what I heard was the problem, that it's the chairperson's sole discretion that it's new evidence. Where should that be the board's discretion?
Or I think even the legal councils, right? It would be the legal council's discretion.
So, I think that you would need to have, and probably, we, if, if we're cleaning it up, and again, trying to stay away from doing any more than we had to, it would be that the chair in, after consultation with the special counsel, would make that decision. Because again, you're going back to, is this new evidence? And does the new evidence have bearing on the complaint, such that it would make a difference? Because you also don't want to put the board and the accused back through the process, here's a new piece of evidence I have, here's a new piece. So, it does have to be something significant. And that, again, just like determining whether you have facts that meet the elements, that's a legal analysis.
So, could we not make, if there's new evidence that go through the legal counsel first, and then if they determine that it is in fact new evidence that's worth bringing back to the board? Does that, am I?
No, you can, if you're willing to change an additional section of the ordinance. Like I said, we were just trying to change the only the things we had to change. You certainly could.
Okay. What you're saying is when the city secretary has very precise rules who to send the information to and how many days, but when you get to this, she's sending out information to both sides, the accused and the accuser, and the city, there's no instruction on there whatsoever to get legally involved, none. And I think it's missing. And then even in, and if you read it literally, it says that they decide on their own, it's sole discretion that it has or hasn't got merit, then it goes from there. They can dismiss it if they want to. And it could be evidence that an attorney would understand, or a layman like me wouldn't. But I think there's a big, big hole in this. There's almost four pages of how to write it originally, and wonder how to do a reconsideration. Any other comments from council? I'd entertain a motion on this item.
Yeah, mayor, I'm going to make a motion to this item. And it's, it's to the revision that was presented this evening, not the one that was posted on Friday. And I'm going to make the motion to approve with the following changes. We're going to reject changes to thirty-nine point one four and one five. And I would like to add the verbiage to section thirty-nine point one seven, after chairperson's sole discretion, to indicate after consultation with special counsel.
And I'll second that.
Is there any further discussion? It's unanimous. Okay, consider an act on a resolution, casting a vote for the member of the Denton County Appraisal District Board of Directors, beginning January one, two thousand twenty-five. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, mayor. Just a quick synopsis of this item, and you do have someone who has signed up to speak on this item as well. A few meetings back, we actually nominated two, yes. Oh, hi. Sorry about that. Would you like to come back? Sorry about that. So, a couple meetings back, the council nominated Jared Usler to be on the ballot for the DCA Board of Directors, as well as Ray Martin, who had reached out to the city asking for nomination as well. There are five thousand total votes available in Denton County for the Board of Directors. We have thirty-one assigned to Corinth. You could do what you want with those votes, as you've seen in the package, you could put all of those to one candidate, you could put, you could split them, that is at the council's discretion. But as I said, mayor, you do have a speaker tonight that would like to address on this item as well, and we'll answer any questions that you have.
Any questions, council? Okay. Mr. Hertiford.
Hennifer.
Hertiford. You've got three minutes.
Thank you, honorable mayor and council. My name is Mike Hennifer. I live at forty-two sixty-five Parvis Hill in Carrollton, Texas. I'm honored to be a nominee for the Board of Directors for DCA, and I'm here to persuade you to give your votes to me. I know you nominated two other people, but you do have the right to vote for anyone you, you wish. The question is, why vote for me? I think I'm qualified. In nineteen ninety-one, I started a commercial real estate firm. We've managed since then thirty million square feet. As the owner of that firm, I've personally handled lots of protests in formal, formal, and even instituted several lawsuits. I understand the, the process. I was on city council for the city of Carrollton. I understand a little bit of the work that you go through, and I'm, I appreciate the hard work that you, that you do. Having managed a lot of property and having gone through the appraisal process does not really qualify me alone to be on this board. I think I have the right acclimate in this way. My father taught me all my life that I should be the man, not with all the answers, but with all the questions. And I think if I sat on that board, I could ask the right questions. A good property manager dives down, finds problems before they become bigger, and solves them. And that's what I think you do when you're on this board. I've met with the current chief appraiser for almost three hours. I've squeezed everything out of him, I think I can. I've done my homework, I'm ready to go, and I think I could do a good job. You might ask this, why would you want to be on this board? And I'll try to, I, I came, somebody asked me this, and I came up with an answer, I didn't have pat, and I, I thought was pretty good, so I'll share it with you. Many years ago, I was a basketball referee. It's hard being a referee, you've got to learn the handbooks, there's four of them back then. It took years to memorize those. You have to develop a referee's eye, where you can see the players in a way, and almost in slow motion, where the folks in the audience don't see that, that the way you do. And my wife had asked me all the time, why do you want to be a referee? And I told her, it's hard work. But if I called a fair game and I walked off the court after doing, working really hard, I felt like I had done something good. And that's what I want to do on this Board of Directors. I want to work hard, develop an eye that sees what others don't see. When I walk off the court, I want to feel like I did something good. And therefore, I ask, I plead for your votes, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I'd entertain a motion on this item.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion with comments.
For what?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mike Hennifer to the board. And I'd like to make a couple comments prior, maybe to getting a second and a vote. So, we'll see if it gets a second.
I'll second.
Okay, so, we, Jared Usler, I think is excellent, and, and I'm really proud that we were able to nominate him. The other guy that we nominated, I think, could also do well. But anybody that shows up at five-thirty and sits here till eight-thirty, in the off-chance that a city council would give us our measly thirty-one votes, when we, that's not a lot of votes in this process, it's not going to make or break a lot of things, that tells me that, that you certainly are willing to put the time in to see if we can't get the appraisal district thing figured out. So, congratulations, at least from a nomination standpoint.
Is there any other comments? Okay. All right, cast your vote. Okay. Congratulations, you got thirty-one votes.
Thank you, Mike, and thank you for your time and.
Those thirty-one votes are big to me. They mean a lot to me.
Okay. All right, council comment and future agenda items. The purpose of this section is to allow each council member an opportunity to provide general updates and/or comments to fellow council members, the public and/or staff on any issues or future events. Also, in accordance with section thirty point oh eight-five of the Code of Ordinances, at this time, any council member may direct then an item be added as a business item to any future agenda. Mr. Glock.
I have nothing, sir, thank you.
Ms. Lindsay.
I just wanted to say thank you to the city this last couple of weeks, because I got to go out with Public Works and the firefighters, the fire department. And it was amazing, and I had such a great time pulling mop heads out of the lift stations and laying sod and riding around in the fire truck and getting to see what everybody does. And I'm so grateful, because I just get to continue to see how great our staff is here in Corinth, and how lucky we are to have the amazing people serving us day in and day out. And it's just been an amazing experience, and I'm very excited to see the other departments and learn more and more, so that I can serve the city to the best of my ability. and learn more and more, so that I can serve the city to the best of my ability.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes, sir. I know that it's a month away, but on December 4th, the Four Star Nissan here is one of three places in the whole United States that are getting the new Armana that's coming out, and they're having a really big upscale celebration, and they asked that all the citizens and everyone knows about it and goes out. I think it starts at 5:30. We can put more information out on social media, but this is really big for our city, that we were one of the ones that it will be at, so I just wanted to go ahead and ask everyone to put that on their calendar.
December 4th. Ms. Pickens?
I just wanted to remind everybody that on Saturday is the Boots and Brew at the Agora. It should be a really, really great event. I know the firefighters and the PD are having some Battle of the Badge, so it should be a fantastic event, and I hope, weather should be great, so I hope everybody's able to attend.
Mr. Campbell?
Mayor, just one more time, welcome our new police chief. Glad to see you sitting out there.
I just want to remind everybody that next Monday is Veterans Day, and if you know a veteran, I'd say thank you for your service and recognize for what they do for us and what they did for us to make this country what it is today. So, with that, we're going into executive session under item number 551.071 at 8:30.
Thank you.